An invocation offered by Mr. Waddington followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
God our Father, as we gather for this meeting tonight, give us the guidance and wisdom to make the proper decisions. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cresser, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of April 23rd, 2018. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
I'm with the way accept the minutes of the April 23rd meeting in dispense of the formal reading. Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion be approved. And hearing no objection, the motion is approved. We turn now to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address any of the regular items of business, please step to the microphone and give us your thoughts and your name and address, too, please.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. On item two, the amendment to transient occupancy tax, usually 100% of that goes into general fund, and tonight you want to peel off about 10% of that and designate it to marketing events and promotion of the city. I'd like to know, when you get to this, a little bit more of this, and how much we're really taking in on this tax a year, and also what the 10% amount amounts to. And then on your item three here, you have reimbursement to the Sandusky City Schools for some work that was done in a stormwater basin for $13,500. And I'm wondering if they got permission to do this, where we're reimbursing them? And is this going to be a habit as they progress with their construction there? I'd like to know what the procedure is for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way, Sandusky. I don't, this is on item number one, which is the capital budget. I can't remember if you guys had a public hearing on this. If you did, I apologize for missing it, but I'll make my comments tonight. We're showing where $625,000 again is coming out of the EMS fund for demolition, commercial demolition work, which I assume is, you know, maybe Myers Winery and whatever else. I'm just here to remind the commission that the reason why the EMS fund was originally started was to pay for fire, new fire engines, ambulances. And we're seeing here that in 2020, we're actually going to be going out, well, 2019, actually, in 2020, we're going to be going out for a new fire engine and an ambulance, and we're borrowing money. That EMS fund was set up so that we didn't have to borrow money, that we would pay cash. So it's the old, you know, Robin Peter to pay Paul type thing, I guess. The other item is, when I go to coffee meetings with the commissioners, and it's mentioned that we're putting an additional $1 million every year in the streets, need to be careful when we say that, because that $1 million is not just going to streets, but it's also going to sidewalk, the sidewalk program, the forestry department program, cutting down trees, maybe taking out stumps. So I'm not going to say it's dishonest, but when we make that statement, we need to be perfectly clear so the public understands that that extra $1 million is not just going into streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schfar. Anyone else wishing to address the commission on our regular agenda items? Not then, I would appreciate a motion to accept the communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation.
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. And hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Cresser, would you present the consent agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. President. On the consent agenda this evening, we have item A, which is the disposal of firearm magazines for the police department. This is a second reading. Also, a second reading for the addition of protected classes for housing matters and prohibiting discrimination in employment and public accommodations. Item C is the First Amendment to a lease agreement with New Par doing business as Verizon Wireless for the North Depot Street cell tower for a time extension only. Item D is a lease addendum with Owensound Transportation Company for use of the Jackson Street Pier. Item E is change order number one with Edward Dewan Company for demolition and debatement of the former American Crayon property. Item F is change order number one with Hanks Plumbing and Heating for the Cedar Point Number Four Ejector Station Improvement Project. Item G is change order number one and final with Pitt Concrete Masonry for the 2017 sidewalk repair and replacement project. Item H is change order number one with Rapper Construction Incorporated for the Venice Heights Boulevard Reconstruction Project. Item I is for emergency HVAC repairs at Big Island Water Works.
Thank you, Mr. Cresser. Commissioners, are there any items, any items which any of you wish to have removed from the consent agenda? If not, then would someone care to make a motion to move those pieces of legislation?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda and declare that all ordinances and/or resolutions A through I, as drafted and presented to the City Commission, under the consent agenda, shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions A through I, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There's a motion and second discussion. Ms. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners first of the motion?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolutions.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Those various items are adopted and passed. Would you present item number one, please?
Item one is an ordinance approving and adopting the 2018 five-year capital improvement plan for the city of Sandusky. This is a second reading.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance at second reading.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Ms. Cresser, would you poll with Ms. Poole?
We're going to answer, there's a question that we, I was waiting to hear the answer to from the podium. Dealt with the fire truck.
Oh, yes.
So now it's, then I'll speak.
Fair enough. I don't know, Mr. Whoopser, Mr. Soloway, who's the, maybe Chief, who's the best person to field that question? The question is, years ago, the city set up, the commission set up the EMS fund, as was its discretion, to pay for fire equipment. Subsequent commissions have seen fit to use some of those funds to destroy some of the, or raise some of the commercial buildings that are blighted and dangerous in the city. And from time to time, as we do with many other capital projects that last for many, many years, especially in this low-interest rate environment, we do borrow money. And so we've made an election here to use some of those funds to demolish buildings, and some of those funds to purchase firetruck, we would borrow. And I wonder, that's obviously in the proposed capital budget, and Mr. Whoopser, maybe you could speak to that.
Sure. Through the commission president to the audience, and Hank can feel free to jump in, or Chief Wilcox, or Chief Orzak at any time, but to your point, in 2013, I believe, a previous fire chief identified that there were overages in the EMS account. And ultimately, when we were doing an analysis of all of our funds upon the commission hiring me a city manager in 2014, 2015, we were looking at the best use of those overages potentially in that fund, and we knew that we had a large backstock of dangerous blighted buildings that were hazards to the public's health and safety, and potentially the health and safety of firefighters who might have to go into those buildings if they were vandalized or set on fire. And so ultimately, we made a recommendation for a very specific amount that Hank certified as being more than was necessary to meet the needs of the fire department in that account, to go towards the elimination of the most blighted buildings in Sandusky, including buildings such as American Crayon, GNC Foundry, and several others, and that we would take a wait-and-see approach in the future, once those initial funds had been expended, as to whether or not the needs, or the funds in the EMS account would be enough over time to dedicate any more funding. And I know that both Chief Wilcox and Chief Orzak have sat down with Hank, and we're looking at, once that initial $1.5 million is expended, will there be any more resources? We don't know, because they're looking at the needs of the EMS fund. As it relates to the financing of a firetruck, I would say that we have always used that practice, and Hank can talk about that. The total collection in one year of the EMS fund is probably not enough to purchase one large ladder truck. And so ultimately, we would always have to look to financing as one mechanism for that, in addition to meeting the other needs of the department. So I think those two things are separate. I think we had pooled a surplus that we determined with the commission's leadership to put into eliminating some of the most dangerous buildings in Sandusky. But ultimately, we will always look to financing as one available option for future purchases, and would have had to have done so, even in the event that we didn't make the choice to demolish those buildings. With that, I would turn it over to either of our safety chiefs or Director Soloway.
Gentlemen, anything to add?
Nothing from the fire.
All I'll say is, we look at the projections annually with the EMS funds with the chiefs and Aaron and Eric to make sure those revenues, as Eric mentioned, are coming in. We adjust those numbers. But the initial discussion we had was to really kind of boots to the ground and use a good chunk of that money last year and this year to remediate some of these blighted structures. After that's completed, we will obviously take a year-to-year approach to see what, how that funding stream is coming. But that is correct about financing the equipment. We've always, the account was never set up to pay cash only. It was always set up to be available to purchase these things. And obviously, like, a ladder truck's $1.2 million. That's something you want to finance, because it would gut your whole account, so.
Consistent with past practice, and you're comfortable that we have sufficient funds to be able to purchase it.
I think it's the way to do it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Poole.
Yeah, just that, yes, that explains what we did. I think what's at question here is the capital budget and how we're spending our money. The concept of that there was an overage, the fact that we're having, the fact that the money's not going to be there, we would have $500,000 plus whatever is added to that account. At the time, we want to borrow $600,000. It's as simple as that. The question from the public is whether or not this was a wise expenditure. I would suggest that at the end of the day, because there's an additional, I think, $100,000 or $200,000 between now and the next three years, that's going to go toward demolishing buildings also from that very fund. What do we have to show for it? Now, I would suggest that it perhaps, the money we spent tearing down the American Crayon building, the money we spent out on the West End on Monroe Street, the old GNC Foundry might be well spent. That's fine, but now what do we have to show? As we go forward and gut the EMS fund and then borrow money in an environment where we're unsure, or quite frankly, interest rates are going up. And I would suggest that perhaps the concern is legitimate. If you're not going to buy trucks and pay gas, or if you're not going to spend cash from the EMS fund for firefighting equipment, then perhaps you should stop collecting it as you do and call it EMS. That's really what the concern here is. You call it an EMS fund, which kind of justifies setting the money aside. And then in the end, you say, well, we're really not going to buy, we may not buy equipment with it. Well, just be honest and put the money where you think it belongs to start with. Or at least tell us that we really figure that we're not going to spend a significant amount of this on firefighting equipment, but it's a nice fund to have on the side in case something else comes up we'd like to move the money to. And just say that, and we can move forward. Thank you. I'll be voting no for other reasons in that budget. We have significant amount, we have money for, I spoke at the last meeting about, let's leave it at that. I'll be voting no.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I disagree with Commissioner Poole's analysis entirely. What do we have to show for it? I'll tell you what we have to show for it. If you take down blighted buildings, you're not sending firemen into harm's way. And I think that's what it's always been about, is not sending firemen into harm's way. And maybe we got firemen that are alive today because of that. So that's the justification for taking down, by using an EMS fund to take down blighted buildings. And the other side of this, I never, in my wildest dreams, would have thought that you would expect to fund a major capital investment out of an EMS fund and not finance it. That's what industry does, that's what corporates do all the time, that's what people do with their own cars. Very few people have the ability to lay out the kind of cash that it takes to buy, to make that kind of investment. I don't believe the EMS fund was set up to buy hook and ladder trucks.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I would have to agree with Commissioner Brady. I'm fine with spending the EMS funds to take down the blighted buildings and to make more property safe in town. And I think it's fiscally irresponsible not to finance the ladder trucks and the large pieces of equipment like this. So I think that city staff is going to do this the right way. I'll be supporting it.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, just one last comment. You know, Mr. Brady, a comment. The fact is, we do have the ability to pay cash for those vehicles, and we don't have to go into debt. We can argue whether or not any particular amount of money should be spent on demolition of this building or that building. It's the concept of, you tell the public one thing, and then you don't do it. And then we hear lots of explanations of why it's okay. And that's really what we're talking about, to the EMS fund. I would have just as soon added that money to pay for two firefighters, which would have been just as worthy. And quite frankly, that's enough said.
Additional questions or comments? Ms. Cresser, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Number, item number two, please.
Item two is the first reading for an ordinance amending Part One Administrative Code Title Nine Taxation, Chapter 193 Transient Occupancy Tax of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Sandusky in the manner and ways specifically set forth here and below.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance at the first reading.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. Mr. Lasco, why don't you kick things off and put this in context for us, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the commission, members of the public. Dating back about three decades, the city maintained the ability and authority to levy and collect tax on basically what's known as sort of transient guests or transient stays. Per definition, that was basically anyone that was staying in a facility of five units or more, that were staying less than 30 days. And that's sort of been the process for the last couple of decades. Obviously, we've seen trends across the country, and very specifically in Sandusky, where sort of the transient, or in vacation rental by owner markets are upticking, which is basically folks that are vacationing in duplexes and condominiums and single-family properties, and certainly in a vacation community like Sandusky. That's a very large and growing market. What this amendment would look to do, would basically look to extend that transient rental tax to basically units of any size, and certainly those that are less than five units. So the single-family residents, the condominium that are being rented, transient in nature, would be subjected to the same transient rental tax of 3%. This would also mirror what the county just passed on May 10th, in which they also amended their ordinance to apply to units of less than five in number. We'd also, to answer Ms. Johnson's question, would look to reserve annually through the budgetary process 10% of those revenues, starting in January of 2019, for marketing purposes. Obviously, it's a tax based on the transient community, and we'd look to, through setting aside 10% of that for marketing purposes, look to grow that tax base to be able to better market the region in Sandusky more properly, more specifically. And I'm happy to defer to the city manager, if he wants to talk a little bit more in detail about what that 10% reserve may be used for going forward, starting in 2019.
Thank you, Ms. Lasco. Mr. Soloway, do you have at your disposal the amount, I was looking for it real quick, couldn't find it, the amount of, yeah, please?
So in 2017, the total was about $1.3 million.
Okay.
Do you want to use that as a benchmark? Obviously, we would expect that number to be a little bit higher, but just for discussion purposes, 1.3, and then 10% of that would be $131,000. So was it in 2014? In 2014, it was about $1 million. Sure. So through the, through the commission president to the commission and the audience, I asked Hank what the number in 2014 was, which was about $1 million. So it's grown about 30% in the period from 2014 to 2017. We've seen significant growth in that bed tax number. We expect to continue to see significant growth in the bed tax with Phase One of the Sports Center project performing above expectations, Phase Two of the Sports Center project breaking ground likely later this year, as well as new hotels and new transient rental, which will now pay into that tax, being planned throughout, with another example being the addition to Hotel Breakers, which will open this year at Cedar Point. So we are seeing a significant amount of growth in the bed tax fund, and the reason for the 10% set aside is that we wanted to follow the lead of Erie County, and really to acknowledge the concerns that have been raised by a number of our hoteliers, both in the city and in the county, that a growing number of the market share of hospitality rooms in the region are going to be done through VRBO, although they're not taxed at the same level, and they're not held to the same restrictions as far as building permitting and construction, et cetera. So this was one way that we could both ensure that they're playing to the same extent by, with a level playing field with the hoteliers that exist in the area, as well as to ensure that there is a revenue stream by which we can use to do something that was recommended in the bicentennial vision process, which was to do more programming and marketing activities. And so I think that was another part of this, is we look to align things with the county as it relates to the collection of the bed tax throughout the county. We're doing a set aside to capture some of that growth, not all of that growth. We think the growth will be more than 10% over the next few years in that account, to put that into activities that will continue to attract this type of investment and fill rooms in the area, so that will, just like a business, you invest in a strong revenue stream so that you can grow that revenue stream over time. So we think the public will greatly benefit from the growth in that fund, and those who are in the hospitality business, which is an important part of our economy, will also benefit from the increased programming and marketing. And our goal is, throughout the rest of 2018, is to put together a plan in place for the best way to deploy those resources in 2019, which will be the first year of their collection.
Good, thank you, Ms. Commissioner. Questions or comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I think it's important to point out that this legislation, if it is passed, does not take effect until 2019, so it won't add an additional burden to the landlords or to the property owner. They'll be able to build that into their business model and pass that on to their customers literally next summer, not this summer.
Additional questions or comments? I think it makes a lot of sense, Mr. Whoopser, I appreciate the idea, Mr. Lasco. I don't know who came up with it first. A lot of ways, the state of Ohio came up with it first. That's what State of Ohio has been doing to fund tourism. They've designated some industry codes, and then to the extent that are increased, as much as we have here, identified those, and a portion of those are being spent to promote tourism in Ohio, and it's a big business. And Ohio's been gaining in that field, and I think investing in that makes a great deal of sense, just as one more part of a kaleidoscope of activities designed to boost economic development.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Poole.
Would you spend some time detailing, what are you, what are you marketing, and what kind of marketing are you talking about at $100,000 a year?
Through the commission president, through the commission president to Commissioner Poole, we created, as the commission knows, a pilot marketing fund in 2016 that utilizes a piece of the economic development admissions tax, and we've invested those resources in a variety of things. You know, some of the video series to attract people into Sandusky has been one of those series. And I think between that, those couple years of videos, we've had probably 400,000, 500,000 people watch those videos with a significant impression. So what we really want to do is partner with the folks in this business, like Erie Shores and Islands, the folks at Downtown Sandusky Inc., the folks on a citywide basis, to say, what is the best way to deploy marketing resources at a larger scale? We think a lot of this will probably go into programming and promotion, from the perspective of looking at how do we grow events that will draw people in, you know, whether that's, you know, something, you know, a similar version of like a Bike Week or something along those lines. So it could be toward giving down payment dollars towards more festivals over time, and it will be to increase marketing activities to attract people into investing or visiting Sandusky. We don't know the best course of those dollars. I do know that if you look at sort of the best practices that are established by other cities, municipal marketing is a growing trend. I was at the city managers' conference in Columbus just a few months ago, and they talked about the need for this. You know, a lot of cities are starting to dip their toe into that market. Cities are products, they're products that have to compete for residents and business investment and visitors. And so ultimately, for us, we need to establish an identity for Sandusky and put these dollars into the best activities that we can that will attract those people into the city. But I think the commission has a role to play in that. We want to engage the hospitality community that already exists in Sandusky, not just the nonprofit, but the folks like Cedar Point, et cetera, to say, hey, how can the city better support activities so that we attract more investment and activity in our market?
Mr. Whoopser.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I listened to that. I was more, you didn't get into what those activities actually were in terms of marketing, what you're going to do. Let me suggest this, that $100,000 is a lot of money, by my thoughts. And if Cedar Point and the tourist industry in Erie County needed us to spend another $100,000 to bring people here, Shores and Islands got a lot of money, I would have thought they'd have said something about it. This concept of, you just haven't been detailed enough for me to understand what the advantages of what we're going to gain. Yes, the general concept of marketing, I do get that. $100,000 worth of growth in business going downtown to spend money in the restaurants and whatever you plan, you just didn't give enough detail for that. This is, just sounds good, but I think Shores and Islands does a fine job, and without numbers that say, something that indicates that $100,000 represents this outcome for the city of Sandusky, above and beyond what Cedar Point's already bringing here, what Shores and Islands is already doing, and whatever your business in town does to market themselves. Because I'm not sure what we, Bike Week markets itself. So why we have a role at all, I'm not, I'm not sure it justifies taking $100,000 out of the general fund that should be spent elsewhere. So I was going to vote yes, and now I'm not. But thank you.
Additional questions or comments, commissioners? Ms. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the ordinance, please?
Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance passes on first reading. Item number three, please.
Item three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager and/or finance director to make payment to the Sandusky City School District for reimbursement of additional green infrastructure improvements at the new Hayes Intermediate School property, declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension, releasing full occurrence of Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Brady.
I'd ask that Mr. Klein give us a brief overview of this initiative, and I would ask you, Mr. Klein, to specifically speak to the, I think it's about doing some quick math, about a 50 to 1 return on our investment of that $13,000. So I would ask you to stress the amount of dollars that engineering is saving us with this, and to answer Ms. Johnson's question, as to how many more times we do it, I hope we do it 1,000 more times.
Mr. Klein.
Through, Mr. President, this is something that's got several layers to it. It's something that's actually indirectly been in the works for many years. As the commission is aware, we had negotiations with Ohio EPA for our long-term control plan, our CSO overflow plan. And through those negotiations, we agreed to do about five or six projects, and then go back and look and reevaluate and reanalyze those projects and see if they worked. One of the initiatives that we agreed to do was look into doing green infrastructure throughout the city. sewer system and put it into our storm sewer system. The recommendations, if you recall, in 2016, we had Strand and Associates come in and they did a report, the green infrastructure evaluation. And they had many opportunities and shown many opportunities through their report to work with the private sector and work on private properties. One of the key locations was the school districts. Mainly, the high school location was a key location that they pointed out. So when the school levy passed and they were going to be building the new intermediate school on the property just to the north of the high school, they were going to have to be in compliance with all of our stormwater regulations. And one of those requirements was to pull their, the sewer connections, which were connected to the combined sewer, off of that combined sewer and put it into the storm. That was just for that property. There was another opportunity that they were not going to be responsible for that we had requested of them. And that was to take the back parking lot, which was also connected to the existing combined sewer system, to take the existing back parking lot behind the high school and connect that to their new infrastructure that they were installing on the new school property. All that entailed was one pipe that would be intercepted at that north drive entrance, drive exit, and taking it to their detention pond on the north side of the, on the Hayes Avenue side of the property. The original estimate through the long-term control plan, there were three projects totaling about $51.6 million over about a 20-year timeframe. We always knew that we were going to have to do that first phase of the project, but we're trying to find ways to reduce those last two phases and reduce those costs for those last two phases. Hopefully, we can eliminate that completely. So doing the calculations and doing all of the projects, that first project was about 10 and 1/2 million that's scheduled in the capital plan for 2021 timeframe. So going through the entire calculation, the estimate for the 2 million gallons that we would be pulling off of our combined sewer system was in the range of about $720,000 for that third phase of the project. So for the cost of $13,500, we are eliminating potentially about $600,000 to $700,000 from that future project. That project was scheduled for about 15 to 20 years from now, but that is a relatively, I mean, it's a significant savings, about 35 cents per gallon savings. This is less than one cent per gallon. So there is a range of about $700,000 in savings.
Thank you, Mrs. Twine. Seems like an investment.
I don't know.
Just as a reminder to folks at home, and we're all irritated by having to pay more for water and sewer, but it's all to protect the greatest natural resource we have in the area, which is Lake Erie and Sandusky Bay. And it's a key to our local economy. It's a key to why people want to live here. It's a key to why people visit here. And we have a sewer system, as almost every older city does, that has combined storm and sanitary sewers. That is, our waste from our homes and businesses goes into the lake periodically. And the EPA has rightly come in and said, stop it. You're contributing to the algal blooms and to decreasing the health of everyone in the area. And they've said, over time, we've got to get rid of that. And each additional gallon we get rid of gets more and more and more and more expensive as we try to get that last drop. This is a very clever way to kind of do an end run on that so that we're not getting to those last drops, which really cost the most. So kudos to you and appreciate the flexibility of the EPA in allowing us to take that kind of approach. Additional questions or comments? Mr. Kresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number four, please.
Item four is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds for the purchase and installation of a new radio communication voter site from Vasu Communications Incorporated of Avon, Ohio, for the fire department and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Chief, would you like to explain the importance of what it is that we're considering tonight?
Yes, sir. Through you, Mr. President. The voter system is basically a receiver that intercepts and interprets radio signals. East in the town, we were having difficulty trying to maintain communications between, from handhelds to the repeater on the vehicles, from repeater to the station or to dispatch. When I came, when I first came here and we audited the communication system, that was the one glaring thing that the captain, who was in charge of communication, Jimmy Green, identified as one of the most problematic things in our communication system. As we explored what the remedies could be for this, we sat down with IT, with Stewart and myself and Jimmy Green, Captain Jimmy Green, and we came to this conclusion that we'll try this initially to see if this can remedy the problem. But this will assure that we will have the ability to keep firefighters safe and also that we don't have a lapse in communications in between transmission.
Thank you, Chief. Questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
The only question I have is, why do they call it a voter site? I read it four times, looking for how we're getting involved in elections. A voter site? Is that just a terminology folks use?
To the commission president, to Mr. Brady, I would have to defer that to [inaudible].
I should have warned you both. That question was coming. I'm sorry.
I think it's from the old days. It's incoming communications. So it's when the people have their sayback, that's where the voter system came from.
Skyline.
Skyline.
Thank you. That's real clear.
The less he is clear, the bigger the accent.
I'm sorry I asked.
Mr. Hamilton, you've stooped to being a bit player, but you do it pretty well. Additional questions or comments, commissioners? Mr. Kresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number six, please.
Item six is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed 2018 sidewalk repair and replacement project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mr. Kresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number six, please.
Item six is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed 2018 sidewalk repair and replacement project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I'd like to know Mr. Klein's opinion and even the commission's opinion on how we can stretch these dollars to go a little further. Is it possible potentially for 2019's project to separate funds and possibly having one that takes care of 100% and then another one that allows us to have residents pay for a portion of it? Because according to Ohio Revised Code, it's actually the property owner's responsibility. But if we can stretch the dollars a little further, we might be able to get through this sidewalk list. Because how long is the backup on this?
Mr. President, it's several years, at least five upwards of eight or so. It's a long list. And yes, we could certainly do an assessment project. That's how sidewalks were repaired in the past in the early 2000s, but when the sidewalk program went away. And it's a huge workload for the staff as well. It's just a lot of paperwork. So we could certainly get back into doing that. It would certainly extend the dollars double or so, but it would certainly extend these dollars quite a bit. And you could do the whole program and maybe get about a couple hundred thousand instead of 100,000 out of it.
So since we close out one program, we're starting another one. Just earlier tonight, we closed out the last sidewalk program. So it's great that we continue to do that. Ms. Lloyd brings up an important point. And I, but you also point out that it's very staff-intensive to make these assessments. And I think at some point, Mr. Whoopser, Mr. Soloway, Mr. Klein, we, as commissioners, need a little bit of feedback in terms of whether we could stretch these dollars, but we don't just end up spending that much more staff time. And just to what you alluded to, this is not a city obligation. This is an obligation that we've undertaken because the voters asked us to get caught up with these sidewalks. And as we've talked, I think about every year for a little while now, at some point, we would get to the point where we would say, okay, you know, we had 10 years or whatever it was of disinvestment, and now we're at a point in time where we need to go back to normal and go back to the way the Ohio Revised Code requires us to do it. So maybe a work-study analysis that would indicate what the cost would be, along with an analysis of the, I mean, I know this goes on the property as an assessment, and we always expect that the property owner's going to pay it, but we know from experience, Mr. Soloway, that we have, whatever it is, 5%, 10% of the assessments, maybe it's more than that, that never get paid. And we end up having to eat that. So maybe we could do a cost-benefit analysis. I like the idea of having two pools. One puts you to the top of the list and you get maybe 50/50. The other one, it would be part of the, we're going to catch up, but we need to know what the costs are. Good point.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Poole.
May I suggest that what's been suggested in terms of adding the burden of this onto the taxpayers, not quite stretching the dollars that have been stretching the dollars. It's simply adding an additional tax on to the homeowners. And I would suggest that they gave us a quarter percent to do this two years ago. So the basic premise going into this, I'm not sure is actually stretching anything. If you want to do a study, certainly support that. I believe more money should be spent on this than we are spending now. And quite frankly, as an analogy, if you got $50,000 to spend on picking up trash downtown, asking me to add to, to pay more to fix sidewalks is probably just not something that I'm real supportive of, since I just gave you a quarter percent out of my whole income. Just my thoughts on it as you go forward.
Additional questions or comments on the 2018 proposal? Not them. Mr. Kresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Yes. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Item number seven, please.
Item seven is an ordinance declaring a 2001 Dodge pickup truck as unnecessary and unfit for city use pursuant to Section 25 of the city charter, authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase a 2019 Ford F-350 XL four-wheel-drive pickup truck from Middletown Ford of Middletown, Ohio, through the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program for the Sewer Maintenance Division, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Kresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number seven, or number eight, please.
Number eight is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase two 2018 Ford utility police SUVs through the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program from Lebanon Ford of Lebanon, Ohio, for the police department, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Kresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number nine, please, our last item.
Nine is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into software license and service agreements with Foxter Solutions Incorporated, doing business with GPS software of Swansboro, North Carolina, for scheduling and dispatching software and services for use by the Sandusky Transit System, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Ms. Waddington, you might want to answer this question, but you might want to lateral it to the Scotsman back there. The question really is, it's a lot of software. What functionality will this add to our system?
Through you, Mr. President, member of the commission. This software will replace the existing software we have, which is with Trapeze. ODOT no longer recognizes that or approves that to be continued to be paid for out of the grant funds. So ODOT provided two pre-selected vendors that the city could choose from, and the software will be handling dispatch and scheduling. So it will increase our efficiency, mostly with our dial-a-ride services. Also should help with reporting and billing and tracking data. So the city received a Tiger grant, which will cover the majority of the cost of this software. It will cover $149,455, which leaves a balance of $1,000 for the city, which will be paid for from the capital replacement funds. So it's basically replacing outdated software that is no longer ODOT-approved for grant
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
On the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady, or Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted, not without a fence, however. We turn now to the city manager for his report. Mr. Whoopser?
Thank you, Commission President, commissioners, audience, and staff. I will start with the donations. First, I'd like a motion, I'd like to ask for a motion to accept a $20 donation from Rhonda Roberts for the K-9 Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. No objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks.
Second, I'd ask for a motion to approve from Barb Wary and the family of Teddy, Leitha Elkins, the donation of a burial site valued at $467 to be used as a final resting place for a U.S. veteran at Oakland Cemetery and Memorial Park.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, second discussion. No objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved with just a lot of respect for that.
Absolutely. Also, I'd ask for a motion, whoops, did I miss something? Oh, sorry, I've got a funny look. I'd ask for a motion to accept a donation of $1,708 from the Cedar Point Garden Club for the purchase of a bench to honor Sandusky's bicentennial. The bench will be installed in Washington Park and provide visitors with a place to sit and enjoy the view.
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion, second discussion. No objection, the motion be approved. And hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks.
Thank you. The Free and Accepted Masons of Science Lodge Number 50 have donated $233 to the City Greenhouse in memory of Richard Megg, a member of the lodge who was also an active volunteer at the greenhouse. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
There's been a motion, is there a second? Then a motion, second discussion. No objection, the motion be approved. And hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks to the friends, or to the mason, excuse me.
Then our last donation of the evening, the 501(c)(3) Friends of the Greenhouse Incorporated donated $60 to the City Friends of the Greenhouse General Trust Account. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
Second.
Then a motion, second discussion. No objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks to the Friends of the Greenhouse.
Thank you. Moving on to new and old business, starting with administration. I'd like to ask the commission to make a motion toward First Energy Solutions for the supplying of electricity and other related services to the city's six largest electric accounts, including the city building, the service center, the central fire station, the Pier Track sewer pump station, water pollution control, and Big Island Water Works. We had a short window, as I mentioned in the manager's report, and the winning bid was from First Energy Solutions. We're currently with direct energy at $5.96 per kilowatt until June. First Energy comes in at $470 per kilowatt for 36 months. So it should save us $137,000 a year and $411,000 of the life of the term. We would be coming back to ratify this with legislation at the next meeting.
The manager has requested a motion.
So moved. Second.
Then a motion, second discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to the police. Eight of our officers attended the NAMI, which is the National Alliance on Mental Illness, approved course for crisis intervention team training. Thanks to Karen Russell and her staff from Fireland Counseling Recovery for providing this training. The program is designed to create a seamless link between law enforcement and emergency mental health services. Crisis intervention team officers receive 40 hours of training in areas including psychiatric disorders, substance abuse issues, de-escalation techniques, and legal issues related to mental health and substance abuse. In addition, they receive empathy training from individuals with mental illness and gain exposure to the views of family members of those suffering from mental illness. I want to commend Chief Orzak for having folks attend that training, both in my time in shadowing officers in Cleveland and also at Sandusky. So much of that job is social service and counseling, you know, on the spot in difficult situations. And I think that sensitivity training and understanding how to deal with those is invaluable. So I think it's great that you guys did that. Moving on to the fire department. Fire Marshal Rucker will be speaking in Cincinnati this week as part of officer development through the Ohio Fire Chiefs Association. He will speak on cancer and behavioral health in the fire service. And I also noticed that over this weekend in the Akron Beacon Journal, Fire Marshal Rucker was quoted there passing legislation that mirrors in some ways our vacant property registration that was passed several years ago and that the fire marshal, along with Chief Wilcox, is responsible for overseeing. And the article spoke very glowingly of the program in Sandusky and the work that it has helped to do in taking vacant properties off the roll and getting them either occupied or demolished or torn down. So I want to commend the fire department for their work overseeing that, which has been noticed throughout the state as a best practice, which was pretty exciting. Moving on to the finance department. The next scheduled finance committee meeting is Friday, June 22, at 7:45 a.m. in the commission chambers. Moving on to public works, street crews have been planning to perform temporary repairs on two blocks of Warren Street from Washington to Jefferson. The city is in the works to design a major project on Warren from Monroe to Water Street. These repairs are just temporary solutions designed to maintain passability of the roads and to bridge the gap until a full reconstruction can be completed. As the commission knows, it's a very large project. It is basically an unimproved street at this point. So this will help us to get by until we can identify the funding to do the larger project. And I commend Aaron and Scott Cromer on his team for moving quickly to get a project ready so that we could do this in the short term. Also, we'd like to welcome Nathan Liemeister, who has joined the Division of Sewer Maintenance as a maintenance two, and Bailey Rarick, who has joined the Division of Water Distribution, also as a maintenance two. Improvements at Central Park are officially underway. Please be patient and aware of construction zone crews to improve many amenities within the park. This is the seventh park that will receive a restoration at the commission's urgent request since the passage of issue eight. Also, for all residents currently enrolled in the optional yard waste collection program, please make sure all bins are placed at the curb on Thursday night to ensure that materials are collected on Friday. Also, we encourage hard-working residents to apply for two open positions currently available in the street department. Aaron, do you know the best place for them to reach out, to get more information on this?
Human Resources. Human Resources?
Human Resources. Go to the city's website, www.ci.sandusky.oh.us as well. Community development, residential demolition. The city has developed its next list of residential properties to be demolished this year. The properties are included as follows. 2018 Wilson Street, 424 Scott, 927 Wildman, 1404 Third, 1819 Camp, 1025 Hancock, that's a partial demolition, 1102 Columbus, 1516 Camp, and 1421 McDonough, also a partial demolition, as well as 1914 Pearl, which is a partial demolition, was originally included, but since has been voluntarily demolished. And 828 Decatur was originally included, but since has been inquired by the Erie County Land Bank. The city has secured asbestos surveys and is now in the process of soliciting proposals for asbestos abatement and demolition of the properties. Sealed bids are due to the Department of Community Development on May 17 at 9 a.m. Residential tax abatement. This week, the city will be formally petitioning the Ohio Development Services Agency to confirm the finding of our housing survey and the contents of our citywide community reinvestment area application. The city first had to publish the approved ordinance in the Sandusky Register for two consecutive weeks before formally petitioning. We anticipate hearing the results in the upcoming weeks in the hopes of formally rolling out the program in midsummer. I want to thank the Department of Development as well as Kelly Cresser for her assistance in that application process. Moving on to the planning department. The regular planning commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May 23 at 4:30 p.m. in the commission chambers. Also, a joint session of planning commission and Bayfront Corridor Committee is scheduled for Wednesday, May 23 at 4 p.m., also in the commission chambers. And finally, the regular Board of Zoning Appeals meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May 17, the normal meeting time of 4:30, also in the commission chambers. And then finally, for the recreation department, the summer fund guide will be out before Memorial Day weekend. Those in the 44870 zip code can look for it in their mailboxes. And registration is now open for the Boy with the Boot Bison 10K, which I thought was a typo, but is actually a thing to play on words, which will take place on the Fourth of July before the Fourth of July parade. So it'll be able to kick off the festivities early and to have some healthy activities. You can visit the city's website at www.ci.sandusky.oh.us for more information. And I have one more thing, I think. Okay. The kickoff of the Public Art Master Planning Process, which is the, what is it? Popsicles and Public Art Angie or something along those lines? I think we're offering free popsicles for those who attend to hopefully will the warmer weather. It's going to be at 5 p.m. at the Floral Clock in downtown Sandusky in Washington Park. So the kickoff, and that'll be an opportunity for people to give their feedback on the type of public art they want to see. So again, that's going to be this Thursday evening, which is May 17 at 5 p.m. at the Floral Clock. It'll be an opportunity to meet with our consultants designing local out of Columbus and as well as new members of the Public Art Commission and to have a free popsicle and give your opinion on what can make Sandusky a more cultural and artistic community. So we hope that we'll see you there. And that, I believe, concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whoopser. Questions or comments for the city manager?
Really appreciate staff getting to Warren Street. That was overdue. Because we're going to have to fix it in the meantime.
Yeah, this could be old business or ask him, it's going to go the same way. I just got, I've had some questions from citizens. With regard to signage, are we going to have and how much money we got invested in signage for the smoking ban so that people are aware? I mean, is that plan, is it going to be set up and ready to go when the law takes effect?
Through the commission president, I believe it's a work in progress. No, I don't believe we'll have every park signed in time for the legislation, but we're putting together a process. I know Chief Orzak and Director Klein and others have been looking at model signage from other communities that might make sense and are putting together a timeline. We'll report back as soon as we know more details, but we're in the process of looking through that now. But no, I don't think the public can expect that immediately upon the law going into effect, we'll have a sign up in every park. That will take some time.
Okay. And one other question. It doesn't feel like a 911 call. What's the preferred number you want the public to call to get the police for this?
The direct number to dispatch is 419-627-5900.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions or comments for the city manager? Any items of old business? Any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
Since we're a City of Sandusky's Energy Special Improvement District, now that we just formed recently, I'd like to make a motion to have staff look into solar panels for the water and wastewater plant. And I briefly discussed this with Mr. Lasko, he's on that board with me. And Mr. Klein, earlier before today's meeting, I think it's something we need to look at going forward if we're going to be a progressive city.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
Maybe Mr. Lasko could send the board, follow the details, how we go through to Port Authority and our...
Mr. President, Commissioner Waddington. Aaron, Director Klein and I spoke briefly today. We've obviously got a great point of contact. It's through the Port Authority that's brought us the recent Imagine Baking project. We'll likely schedule time with her in the short term. The first step of going through that process would be to undertake basically an energy assessment or an energy audit, which is basically going to determine the benefits and the costs of solar panel installation and then the payback period. I think that's going to be something that would ultimately be important for the commission to consider in terms of making a capital investment, understanding the return on investment. So I think the first thing to do would be for Director Klein and myself and others that have been involved to have an initial conversation with Teresa Smith at the port and then be able to bring some initial information back to the commission for consideration before moving forward. But I've shared that contact information with Director Klein so we can schedule something with Ms. Smith quickly.
So there's been a motion and second, further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Waddington.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Waddington?
I got a second thing. I traveled to Avon Lake for the Tree Commission Awards and we got our 28th annual award for Tree City USA. But I was hoping jokingly, I talked to city manager. We got in a vehicle, John Parker, Mr. Viviano, and Jim Arthur was driving. And it's my second experience now. One other time with Mr. Brady, no headlights at 5:30 in the morning. It looked like a candle. I think Mr. Poole, you were driving that time going to Marion. This one had a buck fifty-three, 153,000 miles on it. And was shaking a little bit like if we got above 60, so I would like that to be checked out. In the future, do we have something a little safer? Can we get a cab? I mean, Jim Arthur goes, "Do you feel the vibration?" I said, "Are you kidding me?" I thought we were going to have an earthquake or something. We got above 60, so we kind of...
I'm sure, yeah. Through the commission president, Commissioner Waddington, we do try to get as much use out of fleets to stretch the taxpayers' dollars as much as possible. And unfortunately, once something gets to sort of the administration side of things, they tend to be a little more worn, but we can absolutely look at. I know we had legislation tonight to replace two police cruisers. I know that a lot of our stock are former police cruisers. And so if we can replace those more quickly, the cars that we get for staff who are non-emergency personnel will hopefully be a little bit newer, but we will look at that for sure.
Mr. Chairman, could Mr. Brady share that ride to Marion with Mr. Poole driving? We couldn't see nothing because we...
We drove a little slow for the first half hour until the light came up.
The lights looked like two matches. I'm not kidding you. We had, we told Wes to pull over. It's like, really?
Who was driving your vehicle?
I was riding with them.
With Waddington?
Yeah, with Mr. Poole.
Yeah, Mr. Poole was driving. We couldn't see nothing.
Well, in the first case, I would suggest the problem could have been the driver.
Oh, well.
I meant Mr. Arthur. That's the first instance.
Through the commission president, just to, we actually had a few staff probably two or three years ago that got stranded in Cleveland for the day because we drove to a planning conference downtown and the car wouldn't start when we got back to the garage. So we've all shared the pain of those. I think my car got replaced shortly after that with one with only about 90,000 miles on it. But we're, I totally understand and we'll try to provide you guys with safer automobiles and make sure that we're replacing them as quickly as we can.
Mr. Chairman?
Poole?
There's probably no argument that it needed to be replaced, so good job. We got every cent out of that.
We're working, yeah, we're working.
We got our money's worth.
So Mrs. Cresser reminds me of two items. I need to request a motion to set a public hearing for June 25 regarding a proposed transient overlay district for properties within the Cove District, properties along Meg Street and a portion of First Street. Would someone care to make such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on setting the hearing?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That hearing is set. And I also need to request a motion for Mrs. Cresser to act as the designee for public records requests on behalf of the city commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That motion is adopted. Any other items of new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
I should like to make a motion for an executive session regarding pending litigation.
Second.
Oh, you must be the most unpopular commissioner tonight, Mr. Brady. Further discussion on the motion and second. Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That executive session is set.
I didn't hear the second. It just...
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That executive session is set.
I didn't hear the second, it just...
Was there not a second?
Ms. Twine?
Second.
Was there? She spoke softly, I just, I was like, okay.
I wish that was...
Any other items of new business? I guess we're on new business or old business. If not, then we will turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the commission on any city matters, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. I have a waterfront issue that I'd like to bring to your attention. This is, I don't know if you guys can see this or not very well, but this is where the Sailing Club break wall meets the break wall at Battery Park. What's happened here is there's been significant deterioration where the two walls meet, and someone decided to fill that with blacktop. And I don't know if it was the city or Sandusky Bay Development, somebody did it. It's not the proper type of material to use for that kind of fill, but it's just going to end up washing in Sandusky Bay. So I don't know if the city needs to get ahold of Sandusky Bay Development to see if they did it, because I know that they're the leasees of that property, and correct that situation as soon as possible. It's a, it actually creates a worse, just about as bad of a trip hazard as if they just would have left it alone. The other issue is, I was at a public meeting last week, and there were a couple residents from Hancock Street at that meeting, and the question they had for me to bring here tonight, because they're working tonight, is it looks like the capital budget, we're spending $9 million on Shoreline Drive and Meg Street, Meg Street eventually combined,